It is six o'clock. We will call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a motion to approve the agenda.
Will you approve the agenda as presented?
Thank you, Burgett. Is there support?
Support.
All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda passes. Obviously, we are here for a very unfortunate reason, and that is the passing of our friend Steve Drakos. So I'd like to take a moment of silence in recognition of Steve. Thank you. Up next, public participation, which we have none. So that will just bring us to the subject matter of the evening, which is this board member vacancy discussion. As we all know, per state law, we have 30 calendar days, I confirmed that yesterday, to fill the vacancy. So we have to basically have the paperwork submitted by July 12th, because the actual deadline would be over a weekend. The state does not give us any grace for the fact that it is a weekend, or the fact that we have some holiday, or a holiday, and they're the 4th of July. So Julie provided us with a potential timeline of, you know, how we could go about filling that vacancy before the deadline. So let's obviously start there and open that up for discussion, or comments, or thoughts on the timeline. Obviously, one of the biggest things is Heather won't be here, if, you know, given this timeline. So, you know, and that was one of the reasons I had made some calls yesterday to try to see if we had any wiggle room, or some grace on that. And unfortunately, on the back end, we obviously do not. So, anyway, does anybody have any comments or thoughts on the timeline as it stands? Jake?
One thing that hits us at the front end is because of meeting today. Today was the press deadline for the Lake Orion Review. So although it says announce vacancy, it won't actually be in the Lake Orion Review until the issue that gets to mailboxes on Thursday, June 27th. So given that goes to every home in the district, that seems like the most transparent way for us to announce this vacancy. So I'm fine, that June 2nd application, July 2nd application deadline, I'm okay with that. The only thing I was considering adding was if we had a meeting on July 8th, let's say, and that would simply be if there are more than five applications, we could meet on July 8th to whittle the number down. You know, and who would we want to invite for an interview? But if we have less, five or less, I would be fine with just coming to the meeting where we actually do the interviews. And, but if we have 27 people apply, I don't really want to sit through 27 interviews. I would want to whittle it down before then. But we would have to agree when we would do that as part of this process.
Thank you, Jake. Others?
Does anyone see a scenario whereby I can be there, so I leave the 29th evening for the airport?
At the June?
Yeah. I mean, the only, I mean, and I appreciate the Lake Orion Review piece. I do think that it's still very possible to get the word out substantially fairly quickly in 2024, with, you know, the ability of even if, and I don't know Jim Newell, I don't know if he could even put together a quick online article and share it, that we wait for a paper distribution to every house. You know, I know it would have to be a very quick turnaround. So we'd be talking about announcing it tomorrow and interviewing next week. I realize we have two meetings on the agenda next week. I don't know if that's even possible. That's the only scenario that I could think of. Just expressing that I would like to be there. I'm brainstorming. If you guys are like, sorry, there's no way, I understand. Because I know that, you know, we've already adjusted things before because of my trip. And obviously, the 4th of July doesn't help, because we're out that week as well. So that was my only thought process. I do appreciate what you shared there, Jake.
I know. Other thoughts? I know everyone's staring at calendars. I'm like, everybody's staring. Hence, my master.
Is that even feasible? Does anybody have thoughts on like, that fast of a turnaround? Anybody who's done it before? Julie, do you have any thoughts? Like, is it impossible to think that people would know about it already, or already be interested in applying at this point? Like, who's, has anybody been through it?
Yeah.
Well, I got appointed. Yeah. So I think the big thing is...
Time for people to, like, what is that?
It's time for people to prepare for it, because like, you've never done it before, and it's going to be, perhaps could be somebody that's never even been to a board meeting before. So like, to be able to give them that, the week to consider it, to do it, and then the week to prepare for it. I mean, like, I totally feel you. Because, I mean, that's really, you know, it's just a crappy situation that we're in. And, you know, that's the fact that we're elected volunteers, that's because we have lives, right? So, I mean, things are going to happen that, I mean...
Yeah.
I mean, all of us would love Heather to be there, obviously.
Exactly. Well, exactly.
100%. Yeah. I mean, because that's the first question that came in my head, is how can we do this to where Heather can be involved? But we just, we can't have the appearance of trying to rush something through, or, you know, trying to backdoor something. You know what I mean?
So if we did an announcement tomorrow, like we're planning to, so that would be Wednesday, and then did interviews like later in the week next week, that not give people enough time? Like, I don't, I don't know. Again, I don't know how much time.
Wednesday to Wednesday, post for a week, the 19th through the 26th, interview on the 28th.
What's the 28th?
It's a Friday.
The Friday before you leave.
Oh, gosh, yeah. I mean, so that'd be the, that's the only scenario I see. And if we felt like that's, does that feel, does that feel rushed?
I'm out the 27th and 28th, because this is like the...
And I'm out the 27th as well.
This is food truck season, you know, I mean.
And I'm not available the 27th either.
The 27th is the Thursday.
Right. Yeah, just saying, just putting it out there. I'm unavailable the 27th as well.
Do you leave on the 29th?
Evening.
So we could do the morning of the 29th?
The 29th, I have two gigs on Saturday. Yeah.
And I think with that too, I think we're running into potential people's vacations, because that is the week of the 4th. So to ask somebody to come in the 29th, I don't know if that would hinder people who may be interested in the position from applying, if we're saying, by the way, we would want you to be here.
You have to cancel your 4th of July plans.
Right.
Well, right, and I'm not canceling my 4th of July.
I wouldn't be canceling my 4th of July plans if I were you either, Heather. I wouldn't be canceling any plans if I were you.
Okay.
And your arrival back on the 12th?
Yeah.
That's not a possibility, because we have to have the paperwork in. We have...
You have to file on the 12th.
By 5:00, right?
I'm not available on the 12th either.
Well, and Jake's not available on the 12th, and neither is Scott, so.
Wow.
Can you see board?
Exactly.
It's Friday in the summer.
And I would feel, and I'm, you know, I'm sure if, you know, all of us were available, I would still have a little bit of hesitation about trying to jam that in the 12th, because if, you know, something happened, and we don't have our paperwork in or filed correctly or something, that next day, it goes to the county, and that is the...
What's your experience? Because you were on, I mean, obviously, I got appointed, but you were part of that.
I was on part of that and part of it.
I feel like that was a pretty long process.
It seemed long.
The day I got appointed was like the day before it had to be filed or something. So they took the full 30 days, I think.
I don't remember that kind of detail, but... I know that there was, there was, there's always been an importance of having it posted for a couple weeks to make it known, give the opportunity. And we didn't, we didn't take it down to a smaller pool, and there weren't, what was it, 20?
Five or six in 2020?
I mean, that's up to us. That was just my idea of...
I understand. I'm just reiterating history.
Do we want to give ourselves a chance?
How many were, how many were on?
Four. There were four for 2020, yeah.
Four when Susan...
And that was all on Zoom?
Yeah, we're just going to the hotel.
Yeah, Zoom was, that was, that was convenient.
Yeah, the Zoom was. I was in, actually, I was in Texas when I did my Zoom.
And I can't Zoom into the meeting?
Nope. I actually asked that too. Brad Bonastic said that is a violation of a WAM.
As only if the military...
Texting people while I'm watching.
That rule, that's a rollback law. Brad Bonastic is now on my speed dial, so.
So on the 28th, you guys aren't available to meet to maybe try to narrow the pool? What if we kept it instead of making the application deadline on the 2nd of July? What if we made the application deadline 26, 27? And at least review the pool?
I mean, we could do, if we don't want to narrow the pool, we don't narrow the pool, then, but, but...
But we could review and decide to narrow the pool.
The transparency part is what I'm more worried about. That, I know it's old school, but I want to, the whole giving everybody a chance to digest whether they want to do this or not. Because I, you know, I was on the board last time, and the people that were, some of the people that were putting in reached out, and they're like, well, you know, give, you know, explain what's up from down if I throw my name into this. And a couple of people didn't put their name into it, but they wanted, but they needed that time to consider whether they were going to do this.
No, I'm not suggesting stuff.
Do you think the community is already thinking about it, based on the fact that Steve passed away? Like, do you think that people are, the people who would be interested have had time to process that already? Or do you feel like that's not a formal?
I think there's a few people that knew this, but I...
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
I think there's a few people that knew of Steve's condition and knew this would be happening, and have considered doing it. But I think there's a lot of people are like, people have asked me, what happens?
Exactly. Yes. There's just a big piece that...
It's the six of us who have to fill it. Well, how, well, how do you do that? And I'm like, there'll be an application process. And I think that's the whole point, is that time of, well, if I would have known, if I would have known there was an application process. So it just gives a couple of weeks, you know, in this case, about three weeks, for that
Yep, to percolate.
News to percolate, and people to realize, because there's 25,000 plus eligible people, and...
So, sorry, I didn't finish my thought, actually, before you jumped in. I wasn't suggesting we try to interview on the 28th. I was suggesting on the current schedule that's posted, we have the application deadline, and then on the 3rd, we're looking to invite the candidates. And we haven't decided whether or not we would short, you know, shorten up the field or invite everybody who applies. So my point of pulling forward was to try to pull forward that. So Heather could have input on if we have 20 candidates, let's narrow them down as a board of six. And then while she's enjoying her vacation, we could continue with the schedule as it is, so she at least has some input on the candidates that we do interview.
Yeah, I understood that. But what I'm saying is, I think you're still inhibiting who could possibly join the field by having the cutoff be, because it will only hit the Orion Review on the 27th. So no one's going to, you know, if we are meeting on the 28th, then that, that method of informing people becomes basically void, because no one's reacting to it.
I tend to agree with Heather. In 2024, not everybody in the district does get the Lake Orion Review. I don't. You know, there are some people that don't, 80% does. But, and I would say there's a handful that don't even read it right away, sits on the counter. I think the news is coming from news and from, you know, our posting on our board page. I think they're, and your idea of reaching out to the Lake Orion Review and asking them to send a special, a special online article makes sense as well.
Regardless of what we do, I think that would make sense.
Yes.
And I don't see that pulling back from July 3rd, back over a few days, is that hard? And then we at least get to have all of our input in the narrowing of the candidates.
Scott, did you say you were not available the 2nd?
I am not available on the 28th.
Okay.
Could we do it the morning of the 29th to narrow the candidates?
But, wow.
No, that's the day I have to. And I had another friend pass away that we're doing a celebration of life that day.
Yeah, no, I'm, you know, I'm comfortable, guys. I mean, I appreciate the brainstorming effort. Obviously bummed. I think it's a big decision. And then I, you know, I'm bummed I don't get to be a part of that. So, but...
Is there any reason that Heather can't, couldn't review those things and give her feedback?
Like a regular board meeting type of thing, if I wasn't there?
Yeah, like, give you a board book of all the stuff, and then you could, I mean, I don't necessarily know that we can talk about that.
Take it into consideration.
I mean, I think that she could, you could talk to the president, and you could say, you know, Heather had some strong feelings on this one or this one.
Yeah, based on the application package.
Based on the applications.
Based on the application packet.
Right. That's absolutely something we could do.
Yeah, like, I would if there was, like, I couldn't be at, like I said, a regular one.
Right. Like, you'd get an actual board pack that's just, you know, all the resumes.
That'd be fair. And I just couldn't send it to everybody, just send it to Danielle.
Right. Yeah, we can't have a conversation about it.
Yep.
Right.
But you can have a conversation with her.
Yeah.
So, you know, email me or whatever, so I can share in the public meeting.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's working out that way, Heather. I know.
All right. It's all right. It's just, yeah. All right, thanks for the discussion.
I like that idea.
That's got some legs.
Lucy's on board, too.
Did Carla Bradman ask us to see if we have to be in the state of Michigan today?
Right.
No. He's on my speed dial at this point, so.
Post the location.
Do you want your entire board on vacation with you?
Nope.
No.
We'll just get her on Airbnb.
Yeah, well, I appreciate the discussion. I, you know, I trust you guys, and we'll be good. I'll do, I'll go ahead and just review them, and then go from there.
Okay. Okay, so, given that, other than that, does anybody have any thoughts on Jake's suggestion of potentially adding a July 8th meeting? Or do we just want to move forward with the July 10th meeting, no matter how many people decide to apply?
That was just a safety valve.
Right.
Just so something's on the calendar.
Because if, if 29 people apply, then we're committing to interview 29 people. I don't think that will happen.
I don't think it will.
But it, wouldn't it be a wonderful situation that that many people were interested in the topic? So I was just giving us an out that needs to be set today to say, well, if we do get that many candidates, then July, you know, and everybody will know in advance that, please hold the 10th for an interview. And if it's the 3rd, and we only have less than the number that we decide, and it could be eight. Five was just a number. So if we say, if there's, and then on the 3rd, the invite goes out, we only have seven people apply, everybody gets invited. If we have 14 people apply, then we get together on the 8th and narrow the field.
Oh, I thought you meant like, interview them on the 8th.
No, just to...
I got you.
Narrow the field if we do have more than five.
More than five, more than eight, pick a number.
Right.
Yeah, because I believe mine, there was nine, and we were here from, it wasn't that long. We were here till 9 o'clock, I think, like, 6 to 9. I think it was a three-hour deal. And everyone just had their own time slot. And then after you went, you could stay if you wanted, or you could leave. And then I think Julie called me.
Yeah, I mean, technically, they could have come to watch the other interviews, it would have been. Not, not the best conduct, but we can't, we can't, we couldn't restrict anybody from the meeting.
I don't know how the public notice goes out, but I think it's important to recognize that this temporary appointment goes until the election is certified.
Yeah, we actually...
So they're literally serving like, four months. It could be the same person that's elected, but it might not be.
Yeah, that person is under no obligation to run for the seat.
Correct.
Correct.
Just, just to put that out there, because we haven't said this, and if anybody is watching that meeting, because this vacancy has come open at this time, the last two years of the term will appear on the ballot. And people, anybody who's a registered voter that lives in Lake Orion Community Schools can go to the county and put their name in to run for a term, the remainder, that would run until December 31st, 2026. That's our, as Burgett just said, our appointment is only until the voters can fill the seat.
Yep, correct. So back to the, I guess, question, does anybody, what are, you know, the thoughts on adding the July 8th safety valve? Or do we just want to go forward with the July 10th date in moving, you know, no matter if we have two, three, five, or 10, 15, 20 candidates?
So my thought would be, we can always cancel a meeting, but we can't, as we've seen, we can't add a meeting very easily. I mean, that's just...
Right.
Because I think that meeting won't happen, because I doubt, I doubt we'll have, and we can just set that number. Is it eight applicants, 10 applicants? Whatever that number might be.
Because it's a lot of work for four months.
It is.
You know what I mean?
But if we, but if we don't cap the number, and then we could be on the 10th going, we're going to be from midnight.
We gotta start at noon.
No, we have to, no, no, we have to set the time. We have to set the time.
Storm away!
Put it on the table. So potentially, if you did have, say, 10 applicants, and you don't want to go through a 20, 30-minute interview with each, could there be like, a lightning round at the beginning of the interview meeting, where you spend, you know, five, 10 minutes with each, and then deliberate and narrow?
I think that's what, my thought was, that's what the application, that's what the application... The speed dating for me would be, if there's 18 people, you can look at the applications. It's similar to what happens with the superintendent, as we'll see all those packets starting this weekend. And then we'll come together in, you know, closed session to get all the information on them, and then publicly to discuss them. But basically, that's what happens there, is we'll be picking X number of people to interview solely off pieces of paper. So that was my, but that was my thought here, is it's no different than in the corporate world, we get 50 resumes, and we have to figure out which six people do we want to interview.
Right, but we obviously have to, you know, do everything in a public meeting, correct.
So that was my point, is July 8th would be the placeholder of a public meeting.
Okay.
Because of Scott's...
I mean, I think it's a great suggestion, and...
We can't add one, but we can drop it.
Right. So I, I'm in support of that, just as a, like I said, if we have, you know, quite a few applicants, we could, you know, narrow the field. Anyone else have any?
I get it. We've seen, we've seen districts have to do 15 interviews, and I get it.
Okay.
I appreciate the thought.
So with the 8th and the 10th, that we'll just have meetings scheduled for 6 o'clock? And like we say, that 8th might get dropped, but then people will know, if you apply, you're going to have to show up on July 10th.
Correct. No matter, right, just...
For the interview, otherwise, it would probably be unlikely we're going to select you if you don't show up for the interview. It's possible, because we can do whatever we want.
But unlikely.
But unlikely.
So as the, you know, July 8th, 6:00 PM, how many candidates are we thinking for our cap to interview?
I think it's like, eight or 10?
10, yeah.
I was going to say 10.
10? Okay, so...
Because, like you say, the interviews will be 20, 25 minutes. So that'd push us that night to like, three, four hours, and that's fine. But anything more than 10...
Okay. So July 8th, 6:00 PM, and that is only necessary if we get more than 10 applicants. If it's 10 applicants or less, we will interview those people July 10th, and we, there will be no need for the July 8th meeting.
You good with that decision?
Yes. And I assume, Julie, that the candidates, would you be contacting them to say, if we decide it's 20-minute interview slots or whatever, to set them up throughout the evening? Is that something you would handle for us?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to understand, so on the second, we'll know how many.
Correct. And then that will drive if we need the...
And so I'm either going to send a letter on the 3rd that says to not, or email?
Contact you about when, yeah.
You know, we're going to have interviews, you're referred for an interview, let's arrange a time. But if there are more than 10, I'm going to say, great, but we're not quite sure you're getting an interview. We're going to decide that on the 8th, and we'll arrange a time?
Yeah, and then that, that leaves you on the, that leaves you on the 9th to say, but, but the point is, as soon as they apply, they're going to know, you have to be available on the 10th in the evening for an interview.
I understand.
So it's just getting a hold of them on the 9th to get them a slot.
On the 9th?
Because, see, we're meeting on the 8th, so Julie would have to...
If there's more than 10.
If there's more than 10, when we pick the 10 on the 8th, then Julie will have to set up the interviews times on the 9th.
Perhaps, just...
Apologies. Is there a reason we couldn't do that meeting earlier on the 5th, perhaps?
I'm gone, the 4th and 5th.
Oh, you're gone, okay.
Yeah.
It's the day after July 4th.
No, no, I'm just, didn't know you were gone.
I know. The 4th of July week throws a whole nother...
Layer of complexity.
Exactly, you know, wrench in the whole works, because, once again, vacations and, you know, potential candidate vacations as well.
Are people gone earlier that week?
And...
The application deadline, or...
I'm leaving on the 3rd to go up, to go up north, so I'll be around the 1st and 2nd.
Would the 2nd be an option, July 2nd?
If we got all the applications that day.
To just narrow the field if we need to.
Instead of the 8th. That way, people still have a week to...
Then you would have the ability to have more...
Make the deadline the 1st.
And then we could potentially get together the 2nd.
I'm open that day.
I can do, I can do the 2nd.
July 2nd?
The 2nd.
Does that give you a little, it's not as awkward that way? Gives you a little more time?
Yeah, the only issue is we're pinching, I guess they'll have the weekend, and then they'll have till 5 o'clock on Monday to put in, which is fine. So they'll have that weekend.
Right. So instead of July, time-wise...
I just think it gives, it gives them more courtesy for the interviews.
No, that's a great suggestion.
If, if, in the, in the awkward instance where we would have more than 10 applicants, you would be, and I was thinking more of you at that point, because then on the 9th, you're stuck getting hold of the 10 people we select.
I don't blame that. I'll figure it out, but it just, it's hard for people to, I think, commit the night before.
Correct. Okay. No, that's a great suggestion.
Julie, they've known the whole time that if they get selected, they got to be free on the 10th.
Right, but some people are going to have to make arrangements for kids, and they don't know when to get babysat.
I think this works. We lose 24 hours.
I think that's fine. I think 24 hours is...
So do the 1st, and then we'll meet on the 2nd at like, 6 o'clock?
And 6:00 PM on the 2nd?
That's a Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday. If, and this is obviously all if necessary.
Now, is this building open? Can we get in here on that weekday?
Yes, I believe we're open, but I will confirm that there's some future cleaning projects.
Okay. You guys are available? Okay. That is the last day you're open for that week?
I'm not going to say hoping, because that would hope that more people don't apply. It's the expectation that meeting won't happen.
Okay.
Right.
So July 2nd.
Just to confirm then, Julie, a lot of...
Could meet at a school?
We'll figure something out.
Yeah, we'll find a place.
Susan.
Sorry. Just to confirm then, does that work? And you would then invite regardless on the 3rd? If we had less than eight applicants, or 10, excuse me, if we had less than 10 applicants, we wouldn't have the meeting on the 2nd? You would still invite on the 3rd? If we have less than, if we have more than 10, you'll still invite, we'll have the meeting on the 2nd, and you'll invite on the 3rd? So invitations are going out on the 3rd, regardless of the 2nd meeting? Is that my understanding, or...
They could go out on the 2nd if we, if we know we're not having?
Yeah. I mean, honestly, if we want to just keep for...
Simple?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the 3rd, I'll schedule them to go out on the 3rd, but I would probably do the work on the 2nd if we're under...
Perfect.
Okay. So July 2nd, 6:00 PM, if there are more than 10 applicants. If there are 10 or less, that meeting will not be necessary. And the rest of the timeline can stand as is then. The, a couple of other pieces that, we also have the draft of the questions. Obviously, we don't want to read the questions aloud. we don't want to read the questions aloud. These are the questions that were used previously as well. What I am suggesting is, everyone, we don't have to talk about them this evening, everyone take this with you, re-, you know, look over the questions, and then if you feel there's a question that is missing, and that you would like to add to this, please email Julie, and then copy me as well, and then next week at our regular board meeting, on the 26th, we can discuss the questions then, just to hammer them down, so when we do go into the interviews, we will have those all ready to go.
So what you're saying is, just like, so, for example, oh, on question four, could we ask it slightly differently or something like that?
Correct.
But without, but without-
Without giving away the content.
Without giving the cheat code.
Exactly. Does anyone have any objection or thoughts on, you know, giving us, go ahead, Berg.
No objection, I just wanted to point out already that the bottom paragraph needs to be updated.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
For sure.
Seven million.
Yes.
They scratch it off.
So I think that will just give everyone some time with the questions, and to formulate anything else that they think would be important to ask, and then we can have that discussion next Wednesday, the 26th, making sure we're all on the same page as far as which questions. And then, hang on, I got to get back. The only other aspect, I mean, I guess there's two aspects, but it kind of goes together, is the tally sheet. At this point, everyone's essentially picking four candidates, I know in 2020 it was not four, it was your top two. What are some thoughts on picking four versus two?
I'll say, as I experienced in 2020, when we did it, it was prescribed to do two, and I do recall I went first, and I'm like, ah, if you're going to force me to do two, but we all, it, it ended up at that time, just by the nature of how that went, that our number, all, six of us had the same number one, so that's the only thing I would caution us, is the deeper you go there, it become, it can become non-value-add to go beyond your number one if we all have the same number one, because in that circumstance, the other three people who were not the number one were all running for office in, for, in the fall, so, so I just caution that restricting ourselves to a process here until you've seen the interviews, sometimes you just got to let things flow the way they do, and it would have been better than if we hadn't prescribed what we were going to do, where we could have just said, hey, my number one is, my number one is.
I was just going to say, the, the code that we're talking here is, we appointed a person that had been on the board for 10 years, and was-
Right.
A, a board member in good standing, that was, used to be the president and things like that, so I think that, that's kind of the, I mean, that's, that's why she was the number one to everybody, because-
I mean, I would have picked Mary Jo if I was her.
And you were applying, right.
Exactly.
But the point that I'm saying for us is, that making that decision in advance of the interviews sort of created an awkwardness when we went to evaluate the candidates.
It might be better served if we look at that, knowing how many candidates we have to interview, because I can see benefit in doing a rating, because it's, it's not just, in the past, when we, when Scott was appointed, we had a point system, so you could rank people on a point, and then it, the points, so it doesn't, you don't all necessarily have to have the same one.
Got it.
But that would be more value-added if there were 10 candidates.
Correct.
As opposed to four can, four candidates, so-
Yeah, we're doing a lot of one-thing.
Yeah.
Right, so is that, just from my own knowledge, and obviously for transparency purposes, would that be a discussion that we could have either the July 2nd, if we do it, or just the July 10th before the interviews? I mean, when, because obviously we'd have to make that decision, right? So that's the only snafu I see in all of this, is when, when, you know, we're not going to know until July 1st, potentially how many candidates we have.
I think in, something we all did just go through recently in the recent months, was we had, we got, we had to rank the search firms, and we had talked about, oh, well, let's invite them back, and then we just said, well, hey, there's the number one. And that's the, that's the type of thing that, what is, you know, whether we use a method of rating, I mean, and agree to all do it, or what really is, it's, we all are going to have different ways of assessing, so whether we need a rubric or not, that, that's sort of each individual's decision of how do you, what, what scale do you want to rate these applicants on, and we don't all have to use the same scale, because we're all going to value different things, the way they answer the questions, that the way they answer one question may be the deciding factor for one of us, but to say, oh, I can only give three points per question, I'm like, but I want to give them five for that answer. If you have this hard rating system, that it, it, it takes away your flex, the flexibility to, to make decisions, and I think, like we saw with the picking a superintendent search firm, that when we had a consensus, we just talked through it and got there.
Right.
And that, allowing that flexibility could be to our advantage.
Right, and, I mean, I'm comfortable with that, I would, you know, it's just, we, you know, in the process, I just want to, you know, it's spelled out in the process, so if we're going to do something different than that, I'm comfortable, or, you know, that's fine. So, excuse me, and like I said, you know, we may get together July 2nd, we may not get together July 2nd, so, um-
Yeah, and you can have a wide range, you could have one candidate.
At the same time, we're talking about any of the questions?
Well, it's just difficult, because we're still not going to know how many candidate, you know, because that's kind of the, you know-
We could have zero to 10 candidates.
Right.
And that, the day of, for the interview, or I mean, one to 10, because I guess there's zero.
We're in trouble.
None of us show up, but-
When I get back.
The county does it.
The county will take care of it for us.
Yeah, won't that be kind of them?
So one other thing we did, we didn't, I'm sorry to jump back, is we looked at the questions, but I think it might help today, are we thinking 20-minute interviews? Because if it's 10 people, that would put us at roughly 200 minutes if we, you know, flip them, but if you start allowing a break between them, then you're 25 times 10, and you're at 250 minutes, so-
True.
Do we, do we say there are 15-minute interviews with a 5-minute break, or a 20-minute interview, but we sort of need to let people, I think, let people know-
Julie's got to schedule it as well, right, to have people here and-
And as they're looking into this, I'm not applying if it's an hour and a half interview, but if you tell me it's a 15-minute interview, then I'll throw my name in the ring.
Well, and interviews are very subjective, because it all depends on how someone answers a question.
Correct.
But if you let them know they have 15 minutes, and you tell them there's six questions, and they go, and they go on for eight minutes on the first question-
We didn't get to the last one, yeah.
We didn't get to the last one.
Right.
I mean, yeah, but-
I know, you're all laughing, thinking I'd be the one that wouldn't-
It is hard, and if you have time in between, then you have time-
I was going to say something.
I know, I know you're all faking it.
You would be docked for poor time management.
We'd have to give you ice cream.
Yeah.
Where?
15, 20 minutes, or 10 minutes?
Do we say 15?
I think 15 minutes with a 5 minute-
I think 15.
15 with a 5-minute break.
There's not a lot of questions.
So we schedule them this-
I concur with 15.
I don't think we're going to be like doubling that in our number.
At the hour, 20, 40, at the hour, 20, 40, in the schedule.
How many goes over 15?
Yeah.
Say no.
All right, so 15-minute interviews.
Others advise.
With a 5-minute, with a 5-
Around time.
Because, I mean, we, the nice thing is, like, we might want to take notes between each, each one, so that we-
Correct, a little bit of processing.
A little bit of processing before the next worst.
Right, okay, 15-minute interviews with 5-minute-
In between breaks.
Because you definitely need that, that stop in between people, because-
Agreed.
Especially if there's 10 of them, like, by 6 or 7, they're going to start, now, who said that, or?
Yeah, they have to be invited into the room, and-
Right, okay, no, it's perfect, thank you for even mentioning that. Okay, so that takes care of that, and so like I said, we're just on the, you know, kind of the last piece, and that's, that's the tally sheet ranking system, picking, and like I said, I'm not opposed to potentially deciding that after, excuse me, the number of candidates, but just, like I said, the only problem is the timeline, because if we got together the 2nd, you know, that could be a discussion then, but if we don't, then we would have to have that discussion before we started the interviews.
Do you think we could get our hands on the point system that you used when I got on?
I'm sure Julie has that.
I mean, I wonder if that's something we can review, because, I mean, I think we're going to beat our heads against the wall trying to figure out-
No, I, I agree, I just want-
Because I think there should be a rubric that you, you know, I mean, as far as-
Guide, yeah.
Just, just a guide as far as-
What you're looking for.
Yeah, and are we working on a 10-point system, or a 100-point system?
And that could be, is, I would see, you could simplify, is to say, on each of these questions, you can rate their answer from 1 to 10.
100%.
Okay.
And everybody might have 10s, right?
But what I expect for an answer from question two might not be what you expect, so it's not like you need to say, you're looking for this, this, and this.
100%.
It's just, how did you think they did against question, so that simplifies, you just go 1 through 10 on each question that we ask, and then you're, you're allowed to-
And then tally, obviously, and then Berg-
And, well, I'm thinking of other experiences I've had with interviewing, and sometimes when you're in the interview, you need to get a couple down on your belt, under, because then you got, then you have a comparison factor now with your, it sounds really strange to say, but now you can compare, like, well, she was really good, but, oh my gosh, this one was even better, and, and you're trying to rank, right?
Oh, there's no doubt about it.
So you can't, it's hard to rank your first few.
Right.
Maybe the first question be, what's your best joke?
So you go, is that happening when I was in your-
That you can say publicly.
When I was interviewing, when I was judging DECA last year, that my expectations of the answers were off, so I'm like, uh-oh, you know, now that I've seen three, I really wish I could see that first one again through the lens of-
Right, okay.
But I think that's, but that's where our, but that's where having 5 minutes between-
Will help as well.
You can go back and re-score the first or second one.
Okay.
I think if we're going to use the questions as a basis, I think your idea of reviewing the questions, making sure they're what we want to have, makes sense, and if, Julie, if you have the old version that was used two times ago, if you can just email that to us, we can take that into consideration while we review the questions.
Yep, okay, perfect. Good job, everybody. The only other, obviously, and this is just a minor detail, is, it says board vice president will tally, board vice president will be laying on a beach, yeah, so, board secretary will tally, perfect.
Perfect.
No problem.
I second that.
Can we do it in 10 seconds?
So that was just a minor detail.
Take your shoes off.
And then just obviously, you know, minor wording, successful candidate must receive four votes, it, you know, because if we're going to be using a ranking system, but that's something that can be, you know, if we're-
But that, that's also true, right? Like, we need-
Yeah, we'll need to have a motion to approve appointing, and we will have to think of all-
But it has to be four people have to agree.
It has to be a majority of the-
Of the normally seated board.
So it's the seven.
It's a majority, but it, no, it's a majority of the six, which means four.
Four, I had this conversation with Brad Bonasik today.
Is that you?
As I was on my speed dial.
If you're a five-person board, like Oxford, it could be three.
Yeah.
Because that's a majority of the sitting members.
Right, it's not a majority of present, I clarified that today.
I appreciate that.
Yes, I, like I said, Brad Bonasik and I have a deep, meaningful relationship through this process, so, yeah, so there will be, it will need to be a majority of the sitting members, which is four, so.
Can I just clarify something, is there a closed session deliberation or anything during the 10th, or is it all public?
It's all public.
It is all public.
Perfect, I like that better.
It is all public.
Yeah.
Great.
The only thing we get to do confidential, is superintendent applicants have the right to confidentiality, but anybody who puts their name into this has no right to confidentiality.
Correct, okay, so, I think that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So there is a bullet point that I think is missing in here on the 10th end potentially, which is some discussion, I don't know if we want that at all, because right now, how I read it, the candidates are interviewed, and then we independently tally our votes without any discussion, and then we announce our top each, and then we go from there, but do we want to add a bullet point around discussion at all?
I think that is the third bullet point, it might not say that, but that's what that intends, is each board member will announce and, and-
And discuss.
And you'll say, hey, you know, I really liked, you know, you know, you know-
With reasons.
Candidate Louie, because they were, you know, they're, you know, they really seemed to know, blah, 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 and you're free to say what you want about each candidate as you, as you announce them.
So we'll review the candidates at that point, so it's just, it's not just announcer, we'll review and discuss.
No.
No, because I really do want to hear, because, but it really almost, I think it would go down the line, and I'm like, I'm not going to say my one and two, but these were the people, maybe I had these four up there, and you could say something that I'm like, boy, now you're right, I'm going to bump that person up, because, and that really is the, you know, the purpose here, that you've got all these different perspectives, seeing them, and we could open up each other's eyes to what we're seeing in, in the people.
And it can be a little uncomfortable, obviously, because-
Well, because we're talking about-
You're, we're talking about you, and we've got to pick one of you, you know, so-
Exactly.
I mean, two of you sat through it last time on the other side.
Right.
Exactly.
But we were on Zoom then, so it was a lot easier.
Right.
It's true. Okay, any other, excuse me, thoughts on the process as it stands, I think? Okay.
Danielle, I want to thank you for, I know that you've been on the phone for a couple days, talking to people and guiding us through, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so recap and next steps, Julie? That's it.